Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 21st, 2021. I now call the San Juan Economic Development Corporation meeting to order, which was scheduled at 5:30 via video conference. First item on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance. You'll all rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is our roll call. I'll begin with the room there. Let's see, Lenny there and Mr. Villegas.
Thanks, Sanchez. Mr. President.
Marco Villegas, Commissioner.
Ben Arjona, EDC Executive Director.
Rico Garcia, Attorney.
Martha Patterson, Administrator Assistant.
Art Garza, President.
Very good. And Arturo Ojado Jr., President.
Israel Garza, President.
And Israel Garza. Thank you all for joining us. Our next item is our public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments today, Mr. Arjona?
No, sir. There were no public comments.
No public comments, okay. Then we'll move on to item five, which is our director's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for attending this meeting. I would like to maybe, and this, there's five items that I'd like to place on or that discuss a little bit further, but one of the items is on the commercial virtual tour with the RGV. I'd like to maybe start off with that one since we have Mr. Sergio Contreras and Ms. Marie Garza here with us. I want to thank Mr. Contreras for being with us as well as Ms. Marie, but I know that Mr. Contreras was supposed to be on the road and he made the huge effort being here with us. This is a very important thing that we're looking and working with the, with the RGV, with the EDC partnership with the RGV as well. One of the things that we talked about is a virtual tour and pretty much what this is, is promoting the city, the accomplishments, what do we have to offer? And Ms. Marie and I spoke about how soon we could maybe launch a video, which is a virtual tour. And the option was either April the first or sometime in June or July. So the way that we are, we always want to tackle the things right off the bat and we decided to do it April the first. However, because of the cold time that we just spent last week, it was pushed a couple of weeks. So it'll be like the second week in April. We have already met with staff, the marketing guys as well, so they're working on a nice little package for us to display and to virtually do a tour later during that time. So we have, I have Mr. Sergio Contreras, Ms. Marie Garcia here with us and they can explain to us a little bit more on that, on this virtual tour. Mr. Contreras or Ms. Marie?
Thank you for that, Mr. Arjona, to Mr. Chairman and Board of Directors. Thank you. Allowing us time to present to you Sergio Contreras for the record with the RGV partnership. Over the years, we've, we've engaged in the conversation of showcasing our communities, showcasing our EDCs so they can have an opportunity to speak on the latest and greatest, what's happening in your community in a sense of economic development and then also allow you an opportunity to speak on providing an update to the community in the sense of, hey, we've got a planning and zoning development or we've got a one-stop shop business permit or we're going to invest or we have already invested in water infrastructure or we're expanding X, Y, Z roads to drive more investment. Historically, we've done these in person. I think we started right about October of this past year. We decided to move them virtually. And so we'll be doing these virtually and then come back to you and host one in person as we begin to do more in person. At our webinars, the audience that we reach, we get maybe between 40 to 60 individuals that may attend our webinars. And it's usually real estate brokers, investors or bankers that want to get to know more your community. Then we also have, there's no charge for this. So it's something that we do because we have a working relationship with you already. So there's no expense for you at all. Now, what it will take from you is to prepare the presentation and you can do it however you'd like. The way that others have done it is they'll come, they'll come like this and they'll speak on, provide an update on something and then others create a PowerPoint and they navigate us through five or 10 slides and say, this is the northern part or this is a park that we're producing or this is the new development next to the HEB or this is where we've got new water infrastructure. Or you can do a video. Some people do a video and it's, you have somebody that greets, whether it's a Mac or a mayor or someone greets the folks and then you take them through that. Presentation can be 20, 30 minutes and then we open it up for Q and A. And then what we do also is we have a working relationship with the Real Grande Guardian, which is Steve Taylor. So after we finish with your presentation, he will then do two stories, two stories, two articles of what he heard and then he'll put it out there to all his, to all his audience. Again, we do this already at no cost to you. It's part of what we're supposed to do as an organization to create awareness of how our region is growing and we like to focus in some form. If you feel that March is not a time that you might be ready, just let us know. We want to make sure that you feel 100% ready for it. And Marie, who is part of the, was saying engineering, she's, she's pretty much the lead when it comes to, and when, brought this idea to us back in 2019. We did several in person and then now virtually. So Marie, if you want to chime in on why we're doing this and what others have done.
Okay. Thank you, Sergio. Thank you, EDC for inviting us to present today. I don't want to repeat Sergio, but it is a, I just wanted to add that it is a unique way to showcase your city. We know each city here in the Real Grande Valley represents different, unique areas or unique investment opportunities. So this is just a way for us to collaborate in the industry. I know that Sergio mentioned March, but we have you down for April. So I know we spoke this morning and we, Mr. Arjona, we agreed that maybe April 15th will work for you all. And so that'll be good, but I mean, it's still flexible. You can just change the date contacting me or Sergio. But it is a fun, unique way. I can't wait till we do it in person, but meanwhile, we will do it virtually and we're here to help in any possible way that we can. So again, thank you for allowing us to present and we can't wait to showcase your beautiful city.
Thank you. So Sergio, if I may ask, who gets to see this or who do we present this to or do they go on a website or? Yes. So the way that it works is, so for example, we invite our, the folks that typically attend are either investors, real estate brokers, bankers, and they're the ones that typically are the ones that join us also. Perfect. So you bring an audience with you? Yeah, we bring an audience. Yeah. No, no. Yeah. So you usually get between 30 and 50, 60 people that join us. And then what, what people like to hear also, Mr. Chairman, is if you have upcoming projects, road expansion, infrastructure development, we also get folks that are like, that are in the business of doing, conducting business with municipalities. So they also like to listen to these because they say, hey, you know what? I might be able to do some work. And that helps us promote local investment, doing business with locals. After, after it's done, then Steve Taylor will do two stories on you and he'll push it out to his audience as well. Beautiful. Yeah. Awesome. So then we're going to shoot for April 15th and we will try to do this in person is what I'm hearing, right? Because that's, that's where we put the full effect, right? Well, if not, I guess you can have all the, the audience members on a Zoom meeting like this. That would probably be a little crazy. Yeah. So, so what we do, Mr. Chairman, is on the 15th of April, we would do it via a webinar. Now, when we do it in a webinar, we use a webinar that the speakers or the ones that can, are be able to communicate. Everyone else is automatically muted. They'll be able to chime in along those lines just to be able to, to control that. And Mr. Arjona, we would work with you on giving us direction, which tool to use. We, we have several formats. The one that we would do in person would be down the line. Once everybody's more comfortable to, to meet, whether it's in the fall or along those lines, we would then bring you folks. Because of those, what we like to do is we would go to City Hall. You give us an update. We get on a bus and we go to the different parts of the meeting and then go have some lunch. That's in person, but we can't do that now. But, but we definitely can at least want to do, do them online. Awesome. Very good. Any questions, any other? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
No, no questions. I mean, I, I think it's a great idea and can't wait to get started. Both, both for the meantime, because of the situation, both virtually and definitely in person, you know, once we're able to and allowed. But a great idea and I'm all for it.
Mr. Garza, do you have any comments or questions?
No. Tell him I'm on my phone so I can't answer him if somebody can tell him.
Blacky, I think what he's trying to tell you is to mute your, mute your mic while you're not speaking because we're getting a lot of.
It is on, it is on mute. It says here, mic muted on my side.
Well, we hear you right now, so it's not muted.
Okay. Well, because I hit it. Hold on, watch. I'm going to, I'm going to mute it again.
No, no. My, my, my just did it. He can control it from here.
There you go. That got better. Yes, much better. Yeah, just keep it on mute until, until you need to say something then you turn it on. Appreciate that. Well, I appreciate your time, Mr. Contreras. And Maggie, was that your name?
Marie.
Marie. Thank you, Marie.
Marie Garcia.
Marie Garcia. We appreciate your time as well and we look forward to doing this webinar with you guys. Thank you. And we'll work with you, Ben, and we can kind of give you a sense of what, what's worked and what hasn't worked so that way you can have a good message. April 15th this year is not tax day because they moved it two months. So, so don't worry about tax day. That's hot off the press. I didn't know that. That's already working. Good. Yeah, yeah. As the, so you guys can speak on the new project next to the HEB. You can talk about folks about the church and it's open, you know, things like that, of that nature. People like to hear that.
Will do. Thank you so much, sir.
Okay. Appreciate your time, guys. Have a good evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Moving on, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to go through the monthly sales report, just real quick on that. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but just wanted to say that we're doing very healthy when it comes to that as far as the collections. Even though the last month was a little bit kind of like shaky, we had a 0.43% increase in last year to this year. However, as far as total, the last, what is it, six months, we've been very fortunate enough to have a good cushion on that. So totally, I mean, total over the, the tax revenue that had come in, it's about $195,000. So we're doing real good as far as sales tax.
Yeah, I'm on it. I'm on Zoom.
Blacky, can you Zoom? Can you mute it? We can hear you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ben. Go ahead.
That's okay, sir. If you look at the column one on, where it says the March estimate, the April is a 366, 167. That was our estimated sales tax that was to be coming in. But if you look in the third column, we're already at negative 96.68. What that means is that that's, that's how much more money we need to be even. So that's only in a short period of one, two, three, four, five months. We, we've got another seven months and I'm very confident that these numbers are going to be increasing instead of decreasing. As you know, what happened last week, last week, pretty much everything was out of the store. So that's going to be a good sales tax coming back to the city and the EDC for sure. What was the impact on that? Not that we want something like this to happen again, but you know, this is just a trend that is taking place. So I don't know if you have any questions for me on that sales tax. This is just a sales tax that comes directly from the controller's office. We don't manipulate any of this. This is coming straight from there.
The only comment I have on that, on that chart that you gave us, Mr. Arjona, it said on the increase from September of prior year, on the very first one, it says negative 96. That, that doesn't make sense to me. Am I reading that wrong?
Right. This is an accounting type of, the way they read it. So when it comes to a positive, that, that's when you're actually even. So just think about it as revenue. You forecast a million dollar revenue and you're barely at half a million. So you still have that negative revenue coming. So this is a revenue that is on the negative. It doesn't mean that it's negative. It means that that's the forecasted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments or questions from Mr. Arjona on the tax collections? Okay. Then we can move on to the next item. Mr. Arjona?
Yes, sir. The other one I, we have that free COVID-19 safety related training. Reached out to Workforce Solutions as they were setting up these flyers and I pretty much asked them, what was this for? So they sent us this flyer. This flyer has already been on the EDC website as well as on the city side for at least a month, month and a half. We had a, a member of the business community calling and reaching out to see what this was about. And I pretty much told them this is a, what it says are eligibility criteria, which is any small business, 300 or less employees is eligible for this here. This is just a free training. And it's a win-win for the business owner. It's something that is free to them. Having to use the computers and a lot of stuff like information technology disaster recovery is there, customer service, emotional wellbeing and stress management is one of those and running great virtual meetings. So those are some of the topics that are included in that Workforce Solutions, free training, COVID-19. So hopefully some of these businesses can take advantage of this free training. I think it's very educational for not only them, but also us that we're looking at, we treat the city and the EDC as a business. So it's just an FYI and that, that it is available for any business owner less than 300 employees.
Awesome. And these are done via video? What, Ben, or they come to your business? Video? Okay. Cool.
And again, it's free to the public. There's no charge. So that's the beauty of it. Item number three, where we have the EDC property correction deed. I spoke to Mr. Ojado some time and I know that we brought this property, I want to say a couple of meetings ago. This is the, this is a property that sits right behind Risica and Suns Glass Company, whatever, which is off of First Street. And after looking at the deeds, the way they were created, there was a couple of them. And I submitted an order to Mr. Ojado for his review as he's an expert in doing this. So he said, you know what? This is a little bit complicated. It's a little bit confusing the way that they were, I guess, deeded. And so he recommended for me to send it out so that it'll be corrected. However, one of the things that we're looking at, if you look at the correction deed at the very back, at the very end, it says no title tax or survey examination was requested. So one of the things he was talking to me about there was how do we know that this is actually the correct deed? So what we did was we asked our engineer, the one that we have with EDC, Mr. Javier Nohozas, to go over and survey the property. As a matter of fact, he, I spoke to him the day after and he said he was going to take care of that. So I'm assuming he's already working on that so that just to make sure that the points that are here on the corrected deed matches what he's going to find. Now, they're different, Mr. Ojado and members of the board. We're going to have to send them back to Edward's Abstract so that they can do the correction deed on the, on this paperwork. So it'll be finalized. Yes. And just so you'll know, this correction deed, Mr. Ojado and members of the board did not cost us a single penny from Edward's Abstract.
So, Mr. Arjona, we're back from Javier Nohozas.
No, as a matter of fact, I called them yesterday, the day before yesterday, yesterday. And we were talking about the, the other property and I missed asking him about the, the survey. We were talking about the other property across the, on the front edge, on the north side of it. And I completely forgot to ask him about this and I called him this afternoon and he didn't answer. He was, I'm assuming he's busy. He'll probably later.
Okay. So I, so I guess really all we want from him is to confirm that the meets and bounds that are being indicated on this correction deed are accurate? And if they are, then this deed is ready to record?
Yes, sir.
We don't want to just compound the problem. If they're wrong again, then we're going to have another problem on top of the other one. You know, that's, that was the whole purpose.
Right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So we touched up on the commercial virtual tour. So update on Taco Palenque is, I overheard Mr. Ojado speaking to Mr. Contreras as far as the Taco Palenque. It is moving up pretty fast. We were supposed to open up on the 5th, which is in a couple of days. However, there was a little hiccup with the FTC, which is the Fire Department Connection. It had to be relocated. They're working on it as we speak. So we're hoping that by the end of the week, that will be completed. And that they did say, very conservative, was that they were going to do the grand opening hopefully by the middle of April. But I know, speaking to Craig, which is a developer, he said it'll be sooner than that. So I'm, I'm hoping and aiming that right before the end of the month, we can have that grand opening or even the ribbon cutting for Taco Palenque.
Awesome. So late March or early April for the grand opening? Is that what I heard?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, there were some, some hurdles that we had to cross over. The staff was very helpful in expediting some of the tax permits and not, not that we expedited it, but we spoke to tax dot. And also the gas permits, the transformer that was supposed to be installed, it was already, they installed it. So our staff is really working very hard and diligently working with Taco Palenque as well.
Very good.
And that's, that's what I have for the director's report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then we will move on to our next item. Item six will be discussionable action on vision for downtown revitalization.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I know that about maybe three meetings ago, we talked about the downtown revitalization and we had some issues with the technology here as far as the virtual meeting. And, but I brought it back as I was speaking to Mr. Ojado. It's like, we're going to bring this back over. What are these? Because what is it that you as, as a comedian, as a board would like to see with the downtown revitalization? Downtown revitalization covers so many different aspects of it that is not necessarily just fixing the street or fixing the roads, but it covers the roads, infrastructure, facades of the buildings, many different components. One of the things that we're discussing is, and the other one is that the biggest factor is the funding. How do we get the funding? Are we going to do a turnkey? Do we do it in phases? So one of the things is, do we meet up as a workshop to discuss the planning? What is the vision? What is the implementation, even deployment? How do we deploy it? And what steps do we take for us to get there? So there's going to be several, several phases on downtown revitalization. So I think my opinion, my recommendation is that maybe what we need to do is hold a workshop so that we can all be together and start brainstorming. What is it that we want to see first? Do we plan on that first so that we can actually bring in the architects so that we can have a planning in place already before we bring them in? And so when we bring these architects, we can dialogue with them. This is, this is what the plan is. This is what the vision is and this is what we're going to get to. And then obviously later, once we hire the architect, that he can come back and say, this is how much it's going to cost you. So that we can make, I mean, this is till the tail end of it, of the fiscal year, even though we're still in, barely in March, to us it's already mid-year. So that'll give us plenty of time to plan ahead so that we can either do the planning first, the vision, where we're going to be at, and then the implementation, deployment, so that we can come up with the funding. Whether it's going to be, like I said, several phases, but we'll take it a phase at a time. So at the end of the day, we can all be on the same page and we know what is it that we want to accomplish. As I was speaking to Mr. Ojado last week, on the city side, the intent is to connect the city hall, the new one, all the way to the basilica, whether with pavers, but make a connection to it. And then maybe on the EDC side, we can come in and improve the other stuff such as the landscaping, do a traffic, slow down the traffic. Maybe instead of two lanes, maybe make it a one lane with a medium possibly. These are just ideas that him and I were bouncing back and forth. So this is why the, the planning or the workshop is very important before we actually tackle into getting the downtown revitalization is the architects.
Well, I think that we need a workshop and I think that would be the first step in moving in the right direction. And based on that, you know, we get input from everybody and, and start to see everybody's ideas and put it together. I don't think it's hard because I do see everybody being on the same page and wanting the same thing. How do we get there? And I think that's the very first step. After we hit that step, we'll be, get a better picture of how to approach it and how to, you know, manage it after that. But definitely in agreement that we do need a workshop, a joint workshop, the EDC and the city. That way we can, you know, better evaluate this. We're all on the same page. Then we can let the actual, the real professionals handle it after they know our vision.
And after speaking with the staff, what's it, last week, if I'm not mistaken, we, we came up with several ideas. And one of them was maybe the possibility of visiting another city that has already gone through these headaches. What did they do? How did they fix it? What did they encounter? What were the hard knocks on this? So some cities such as Fredericksburg is one of them. They did a beautiful downtown revitalization along with Green. Those are the only two that I know of that I visited before at a different city for that purpose. But there's, there's other, there are different cities that they have gone through the downtown revitalization that worked out great. Then maybe we can go over and, and visit with them or visit the little cities or big cities to see what is it that they did that we can maybe come over and mimic here with the city of San Juan. So that's, that was just an idea that we're bouncing back and forth at the, with the staff at the EDC. It was a very productive meeting. We had so many different ideas, obviously. But at the end of the day, the purpose is the same thing, downtown revitalization, to make it look nicer, more attractive. So as we're driving either way on the front edge, we can see the lights, we can see the nice looking corridor that it's all that downtown revitalization. So just an idea.
When, what's the soonest time that we, timeframe that we can get together for a workshop? Can you, can you?
We can, we can do it.
Send that out to the individuals, the boards of commission and to the EDC?
To the city and EDC, both joint.
Well, I would assume that we'd want it together.
Okay.
Or, or, you know, invite the, the board members of the EDC to get it together. The sooner the better. We can get, you know, we can get started.
You let us know whether you want to have another regular meeting, you want to have a joint workshop and then after the workshop, we can have the EDC meeting or vice versa?
Yes, after you can reach out to everybody, you can get a better picture.
It depends because if we're having a workshop, it may take longer than expected than having a meeting. So we might have to have two different meetings, two different dates.
Dates, yeah. We can do that as well.
I think brainstorming, I think everybody will bring, I think, to the table. I think Mr. Garza will be an asset because I think he, they had the vision a while back and maybe he's got some input of other stuff that he's implemented or he was actually had in mind. So I think that's going to be very interesting and I think it's going to take longer than just, that, well, actually that, that would be enough time, I believe, for the, for the workshop, but I don't think it'd be enough for, to have a meeting right after that.
Right. No, no, I totally agree. I totally agree. It'll, it'll take anywhere between a couple of hours, maybe even four hours.
Right, right.
But that'll be a perfect time to, so that like you said, we can start brainstorming and see what is it that you all want to see accomplished in this downtown revitalization. And we can, we can even dig and, and see what transpired back in, what's it, 2005, 2010?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Back then. And see what was the, maybe the vision at that point was that only infrastructure improvements? Because that's, that's all I can see. I've been looking for some maybe designs or renderings of downtown revitalization. I can't find anything. The only thing that I was able to find was infrastructure improvements.
Yeah. And that's the one thing I look at also, infrastructural improvements because before we go on to beautify, beautifying the area, we need to look at the flooding area. You know, it usually floods in those general areas that we're talking about. I think that's going to be very interesting.
And one of the things if I made though is that when we have this other workshop, I like to bring the authorities along with the sanitation and maybe the planning so that they're much better versed into the infrastructure and the sparring downtown and they can let us know exactly what is it that is under. And if there's any improvements that need to be done, maybe discuss them at that point so that we can get a, a figure in our mind already saying that it's going to cost us so much besides anything and everything else.
Yeah. So I think it's a bigger, bigger operation than just the EDC and the city. I think those, those entities that you devise, I think they'll be very crucial in our, in our planning because they know exactly what exactly we need underneath the ground.
One of the things we need to look into by having this is we need to bring over the master plan that we currently have and see have we met the master plan. Is that do we, are we in part with it? I know that south of the city hall, we haven't done that and that's one of the things we're actually currently working as we speak because of that development. But going north, those are the, one of the things that, is it a 12-inch line, 14-inch line or six, or is it appropriate to what we want to do? Last thing we want is we want to fix something and then rip it apart as well again.
I guess it's going to be very vital for the next 18 months, 24, 20 months, right, that we're going to have for the new city hall. I think it's going to be very vital to have this meeting and so we can actually do something also in conjunction with it.
Mr. Arjona? From what I understand, back in, I believe, 2010, there was a phase that we did. Mr. Hona, right. Uh, from what I understand, back in, I believe, 2010, and there was a phase that we did, uh, downtown revitalization. And that, uh, what was actually done out there was repair all the, all the lines, the water lines. I believe they repaired several lines that were behind in, in, within the area of the downtown. I think that was the very first phase, I believe.
Right. I remember that, uh, replacing, uh, not, not, not that I was here, but that it was some replacement of infrastructure lines and also, uh, repaving of streets.
Correct.
Uh, I just don't know if anything going north as far as water lines have those been replaced. And that's one of the things that we need to look into.
Really, my understanding is when the expressway where, uh, actually the, the hospital is, that was, used to belong to Miss, uh, Rosa Valencia. And that line got looped around, if I'm not mistaken. A, a big, a big line got looped around. And, uh, the most, the majority of the lines behind the old bars right now, which is, uh, maybe where, uh, Aguilera's is, there's, uh, most of those lines got replaced back in 2010.
I see. And that, that's why I think it's crucial.
That's what I was going to say.
They can tell us, you know, what.
Well, Mr. Garcia has experience and he's also, uh, at the time, they had already, you know, started with the idea of, of the downtown revitalization. So that's very vital. And I do agree that with Mr. Sanchez, I mean, getting our utilities and our, you know, Mr. Garcia, and, and, and you guys that, that, that know about that profession can really tie into that, to that meeting that we're going to have. After that, I think everything would be kind of flow. Let me get everybody's expertise there.
Yes. Okay. We should for, if, if you don't mind, uh, we should for the next couple of weeks, maybe have a workshop. Even if it's just a brainstorming, the initial first brainstorming of downtown revitalization. And then we can have many several, you know, others to, to follow. Okay.
Mr. Hona, I was having a lot of difficulty, the audio as we've experienced in the past, Zoom, and we've got some in the same. But oh, I think what I was hearing that everybody's in agreement that a workshop is, is probably what we, what we'd like to do first, right? So we could organize our thoughts and our plans, come up with what we want to do. And then we can, after that, proceed with hiring an architect to help us with what we want to do, right? That, was that the consensus of the commission that's there right now? Mr. Riegus, Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. And I, I would say as soon as possible, Ben. I don't know if you guys decided on a date there. Again, it was hard to hear, but when, when, as soon as you can do it. And it would make sense to do it in combination with the city commission as well, so that we can all be on the same page, if possible.
Definitely.
Or, or even if you don't have the, the commission available, I mean, we've got some commissioners on this board. So I think that's good, you know, it works out, even if you can't get some of the other ones to show up. Right? But, but as soon as we can do it, I think would be good.
Perfect.
Okay. Very good. Uh, what's our next item? No more discussion? Any other comments, questions? Israel, Mr. Blacky, you got any comments about that?
No, sir. I should not.
Okay. Then we'll go on to item number eight, our consent agenda. We've got six sets of minutes. We've got, uh, March 17, 2020, April 21, 2020, May 5, 2020, May 19, 2020, August the 4th, and September the 15th, 2020, uh, to approve. Have you all had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Yes, sir.
Uh, any concerns or comments or changes to them? I found one typo and just thumbing through them on, uh, the minutes from May the 5th, uh, page six of eight. In the middle there, where I'm quoted as speaking, it says the EDC gave it a stable at it, but I typically meant to say stab, a stab at it. So I saw that, that, I saw that. And I don't know if anybody else found anything else that needs to be corrected. If, if not, I'll entertain a motion to, um, go ahead and accept these minutes as submitted for approval.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept these minutes, uh, as submitted with that change that I just, uh, made. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is our executive session. Uh, did we get a link? I did not see one from Mr. Rico. Did he send it out to us before we go into there? Is he there with you guys, Ben?
I am. I did not send one out this time. I can send it out really quickly though.
I didn't hear that. What, what was it? The emails were sent?
Going to send it to you right now, sir. Yeah, I, I didn't get a chance to do so, but I'll send them out in about five minutes.
Okay. So we won't be able to log on until we receive those, right? For the executive session.
Oh, yes. I'll resend the same email I sent before.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move. Second.
Got a move? Adjourn and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Y'all have a good evening, sir.